I would like to call to order the June 7, 2021 Board of Education Work Session at 5:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Jason Whitaker.
Here.
Jerry Beddio.
Here.
Nancy Brown.
Here.
Lisa Johnson-Bowers.
Here.
Jessica Wright.
Here. You'll please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Beddio.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Johnson-Bowers.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye. Okay, the first item on our agenda is a recognition. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mrs. Pro.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Bratton and I would like to congratulate, along with the rest of the district, our spring sports state qualifiers. So I'd like to start off with recognizing our five state qualifiers for track. So we had Jayla Atkinson in the 800 meter. She placed third as a freshman. Xavier Preston in the 100 meter. And then our four by 200 meter relay, Xavier Preston, Brian Turner, Clayton Mosher, and Dustin Horner. So congratulations to them. What a great accomplishment.
Wow. There's something else. Okay, moving on to superintendent's recommendation. Ms. Pro, any comments?
So we are going to eliminate our current administrative position of our EMIS coordinator. So we are going to move those services under NeoNet for efficiency. We already contract with NeoNet for many of our services. They are our go-to when we have questions for EMIS, so it'll just streamline our process.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the elimination of the administrative position of EMIS coordinator?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
May I make one more comment?
Yes.
We would like to thank Pam Camfield for her service to the district. She retired previously, has been rehired, and we want to thank her for her years of service.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Beddio.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Johnson-Bowers.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye. Okay, can I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Pro, any comments?
I don't have any other comments. It's what's already in the agenda, to approve the district's Waste Removal Service Agreement with Waste Management of Ohio.
Okay, any discussion from the board?
I have a question. I know Waste Management is a reliable company, but have we ever looked into any other company for their services? I know we've had them for quite a number of years.
Ms. Beddio, we participate in the Schools Council Consortium that's up in, off Rockside Road. I can't tell you the exact name. But they do certain bids and they consolidate those bids from companies in and around and do many schools to get the better price. So that's how this, that's how we came to pick Waste Management, so.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Johnson-Bowers.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Beddio.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye. Okay, next item, treasurer's recommendation. Mr. Grumey, have any comments?
I asked the board to approve the creation and appropriation of the Educator Initiative Grant from the Gar Foundation in Akron for the amount of $6,870, once the first and second. We will, in past, we can set this up for the teachers to start the process of spending their grant.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Johnson-Bowers.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Beddio.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, old business.
So under old business, we have our NEOLAB Board Policy Number 5336, and this is our care of students with diabetes. This is our second reading. We had our first reading on 5/24/21. It was reviewed by the policy committee on March 29 and May 20. And I do have copies if anyone in the audience would like one.
Okay. I believe that moves us to our next, the work session. We have one item for our work session, that is Board Support of DEI Objectives. Ms. Brown, you asked to have this added, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Thank you. Mrs. Wright, Mr. Whitaker, Mrs. Beddio, and Ms. Johnson-Bowers. I ask for this discussion, how we, as a Board of Education, can support the objectives of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, or DEI Committee. Beyond saying the words "we support them," what action can we take? For example, what changes can the policy committee recommend that will codify the DEI objectives? What can the Safety Committee implement that will support the DEI objectives? And what action items can be added to our superintendent's performance evaluation to hold him accountable for the success of our DEI initiatives? We cannot answer those questions right now because, as a board, we do not fully understand or appreciate what the DEI Committee's work is. And I'm deeply concerned that, as a board, we are not even in agreement about the need for this work. The scope of this work is broad and can seem daunting, even overwhelming. Mr. Whitaker said at our last meeting that he had never heard this phrase used before, but we cannot eat the whole elephant at once. My plan, therefore, is to break the issues being addressed by the DEI Committee into manageable pieces and for us to work on a few pieces in every work session. This is not in place of or in addition to the work of the DEI Committee, but in full cooperation with it. My goal today is to inspire you to action, and believe me, I am stepping far outside of my comfort zone to do it. I wholeheartedly despise conflict and strenuously avoid confrontation, yet here I am. Like you, I ran for school board because I want to make a real impact in our community. The primary need of our students, all of our students, is to feel safe and included. And they don't. They don't all feel safe. They don't all feel included. They don't all feel like the curriculum addresses their lived experiences. And that's a problem. We have heard from families who are pulling their black students from Stowe-Monroe Falls schools because we have failed to create a safe and inclusive environment for all of our students. And I know we all want our students to feel safe and included at school. But when it comes to matters of race, there is still hesitancy from this board to address it. In some ways, I understand that because I used to be there too. Until a year or so ago, I didn't understand how important it was to talk about race and actually take action against racism. Exactly 40 years ago, on this very day, 146 classmates and I graduated from Washington Senior High School in our little town in rural southwestern Ohio. We were the end of the baby boom generation, born when Kennedy was the president, toddlers when the Civil Rights Act was signed into law, and just starting school when Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was murdered. As a white, middle-class child with two educated, college-educated parents, I was always placed in the advanced classes where my teachers challenged me and encouraged me. The five black students in my grade were never in the same classes as me. In high school, I enrolled in the college prep classes while my black peers were shuffled off to the vocational school 20 miles away. And of course, this all seemed completely normal to me. But now, in hindsight, I see how miserably the school system failed them, how the unconscious, even perhaps conscious bias of my administrators and teachers created a gap between the students of color and the rest of us. And it's crazy that here we are 40 years later and the system is still failing black students. It's crazy that here we are now in a position of power, and I'm pleading for this board to take this seriously and to commit to meaningful change. So the question is, how can we commit to making changes for our students of color? First off, the work starts with ourselves, recognizing the bias that each of us carry, and that's hard. It takes sincere, committed effort to identify and understand our biases. One of the best examples of bias is the hesitancy to simply say, "Black Lives Matter." This simple phrase, saying that someone's actual life matters, should not be a difficult thing to get behind. But that's where bias comes in. Until our entire board can say without hesitation that black lives matter, how can black families and students possibly feel safe, supported, and included in our district? Why do we need to recognize our bias? Because this unintentional bias, left unchecked and undisputed, becomes intentional racism. I know this is hard to hear, and it's natural for our immediate reaction to be to feel defensive. But ultimately, this isn't about us. It's about making sure that all students have a place in Stowe-Monroe Falls schools. We have to do the right thing here. We have to do the work to make sure that every student feels valued, respected, and safe. Secondly, the next step is to understand what we, as individuals, bring to our roles as members of the Board of Education. How do our individual experiences, attitudes, and beliefs shape our work? Two weeks ago, a mother stood before us and told us a heart-wrenching story about how she nearly lost her son to suicide because he was being bullied for being black. Imagine if that had been your child. She wrote a follow-up email, and I'm disappointed to learn that she did not hear back from all of us. Can you imagine if that had been your child and your story, and no one cared enough to respond? How can black families and students feel safe and included in our district when we can't even acknowledge their pain? Last summer, when letters about black student experiences were shared with us, one of our members was so disinterested and so unengaged that she laughed and smiled while letters that described the actual suicides of black students at the high school were read. Again, how can black families and students feel safe and included in our district when we fail to listen? When the chairs of our DEI Committee invited each of us to individual meetings, only three of us accepted the invitation. How can black families and students feel safe when we refuse to even learn what the committee is doing? Two weeks ago, one of our members stated publicly that she sees no need for diversity, equity, and inclusion work in our schools and that she's more concerned about the potential discomfort white students may experience if a more inclusive version of American history is taught. How can black families and students feel safe when the implication is that a white student's comfort is more important than their sense of safety? The same member questioned the wisdom of the jury in the George Floyd murder trial and denied that any violence occurred at the U.S. Capitol on January 6. How can black families and students feel safe when a school board member refuses to accept that the justice system did its job or admit that a deadly insurrection occurred? A quote that makes sense for these times is, "All that is necessary for the triumph of evils is that good men do nothing." Nothing will change if we do nothing, and culture change is hard work. Our job as board members demands that we advocate for all students in this district, that we ensure a learning environment that is welcoming and nurturing, and above all, safe and inclusive. If we fail to provide this for even one student, we have failed them all. We have the responsibility and the opportunity to make that happen. And yes, in our DEI work, we will need to address the safety concerns of our Asian-American students and our Jewish students and our LGBTQ community. As I've said, our job is to make sure that all students feel safe and included. In conclusion, I repeat my goal for tonight's discussion, which is that every member of this board will commit to doing the work to, one, identify our own biases and how they play a role in our decision-making; two, get comfortable confidently saying "black lives matter"; and three, commit to working on pieces from the DEI Committee at every board work session. Mrs. Wright, Mr. Whitaker, Mrs. Beddio, and Ms. Johnson-Bowers, I am asking you to do the work. I am asking you to take this seriously and commit to doing the work of the DEI Committee because it's the right thing to do. I am asking you to make this work a priority and give it the time and attention it deserves. I am asking you to see things through the eyes of our students and families who feel vulnerable and understand how necessary this work is for our community. I am asking you to build on our shared belief in the power of education and work together to ensure a safe, welcoming, and inclusive environment for every student. Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg said, "Fight for the things that you care about, but do it in a way that will lead others to join you." I care deeply about this and urge you to join me. Thank you.
Mrs. Brown, could you give me just kind of an idea of when? I think a work session is certainly the appropriate place to have those conversations, the individual pieces, and breaking it down is a great idea. Can you give me an idea of what it is you'd like to see?
Sure. For example, today, the, within the DEI Committee are several committees. The one I've been part of has been the Community Committee. And that committee has been made up of not just school people, but also the police chiefs in both Stowe and Monroe Falls, mayors, city council members. And part of what we've worked on all year is actually, we're actually in the process of producing right now, which is a video outlining why we each wanted to do this work. And interestingly, just sitting there, listening to each person get up and kind of present why they were there, it gave me all sorts of additional ideas. We could have the police chief of Stowe and the police chief of Monroe Falls sit with us and talk to us about what they've done in their police work and how that impacts the school because that does include the school resource officers. We could have the committee that's working on the curriculum talk to us about what they've looked at, what they've found. The Personnel Committee could talk about what they're doing to attract a more diverse staff. But we could, Tracy Cosmac and I talked about it at length, about just different ways we could break this down, depending on either, A, what the board is interested in. We could lead it and say, "This is what we would like to hear." Or we can rely on the DEI Committee to say, "These are what we think, what we think the board would be most interested in," where we could use the most support from the board, or certainly a combination thereof.
I think, I think from a transparency point of view, that's actually really a great idea. And, you know, our DEI Committee is not a board committee in that it's not a, for example, not all five of us are there. It's not a, and so having people come to the work session and having that discussion, I think, is actually a really great idea. Give the rest of us an opportunity to have a frank conversation.
It's such a broad topic, and it, I feel overwhelmed by it a lot. I feel like the sense of, "I want to take action, I want to take action, and I don't know what to do." And then through this process have been finding there are things to do, to work on. And it's pieces, parts, and...
And I think also, our DEI Committee's been in existence now for a year, and they've, they've made a lot of headway, but it's, it's really, in the grand scheme of things, the small step. And I think at this point, I think they're probably ready to start presenting
Yes.
their information to us. So I think, I think that's a great idea. Just quickly, we were talking about policy, you had mentioned policy.
Right.
And I know there is a policy committee. I've sat on it up until my new job, and I no longer can make the
Right.
the time for it. But I know that that is something that they've been working on. And so having them come and talk about what they'd like to see in a policy, or what is
Right.
beneficial and will help us as a board discuss it. And then we can take it to the policy committee to do, you know, the, "How does this work in our district? How does this work for us? What are the, what are we getting ourselves into legally?" That kind of stuff.
Right.
The less touchy-feely type of things, so.
And it gives us a chance to address the concerns about critical race theory and if that's going into our curriculum or not, which, in their presentation two weeks ago, Mrs. Collier specifically stated, "It's not." But it's a chance to have that as a conversation, instead of just, "We don't want this, well, we're not doing it." Well, it's, it's more than that, it's more detailed than that, and we can, we can have that discussion and really ask a lot of questions.
And certainly demystify what, what the work that's being done.
Right. You know, and I look at the Safety Committee, especially right now, since there are concerns about students not feeling safe. I've talked to a couple other people that serve on that committee, and we've, we've bounced around some ideas of some things we could do. And it needs to be obviously in conjunction with what the district as a whole is doing. But just, we need to look at some of those things. So it's a chance, really, ultimately, this, we're talking about culture change, and it has to start at the top. We can't wait for the committee to do it and have it spread out. It, it needs to come from us. We need to put the things in place that everybody else in the district can use. And certainly, we've got a committee that's doing an enormous amount of work for us. We're not having to go do all that legwork, but we can certainly participate and, and help.
And certainly, yeah. Sorry. And as an aside, outside of the DEI Committee, there are other committees that I would like to see more updates from too. So I think this is a great opportunity for us to look at our work sessions. And I know Mrs. Johnson-Bowers has brought this up repeatedly. Let's have a real work session.
Yeah.
So I think that adding this and then looking at our other committees for additional updates would be, would be helpful too.
Very good, thank you.
What, for my part, what I would like to see, rather than some kind of standing, try to fit something into every single work session. I have a philosophical, not issue with, with that. I would really like the committees and the people working on that committee to come to us when they have something that they want to present and make them feel empowered to do that, rather than have a standing slot. Because you could end up with a lot of different initiatives having standing slots, and then sometimes the conversation isn't, you know, one week it might be a really big issue, and then the next week they didn't really have a lot. And I don't want to start the process of giving lip service to any committee
Unnecessarily.
because they don't necessarily have anything to bring at that moment. And so I guess with regard to a lot of the other committees and things going on, it kind of like...
I was more speaking generally, I'd like to hear more in this forum.
No, and I would too, but I would like them to do it when they, you know,
Have something to.
add something to present, not necessarily, you know, "Can we fit something into this meeting?" Because it kind of, I don't want to say cheapens the bigger things that they have going on, but I, I guess, I don't want to see them just come and try to fill time. Not that that's what they would do, but it...
This long table doesn't bode well for conversation. Anybody else like to add anything?
Yes, I have a few things to say. I think the comments that I made at the last board meeting were misunderstood. And I have a question to Mrs. Brown, since she's on the committee. I would like you to give us some information on how this committee was started. Did the board approve it? And when did they approve it? I'd also like to know how we approved a $10,000 stipend for each of the chair and co-chair of this committee. And I'd like to know the dates that we approved it, because I have no recollection of doing that. Secondly, the only time that Ayesha and the co-chair, we were at a meeting at Lakeview, I believe it was Lakeview School, where they presented that they were going to start this committee. So I have no recollection, and if I'm wrong, I stand corrected. The other thing is, I'd like to make a public announcement that I did not ignore the invitation to come to meet with this committee. I had set a date, and unfortunately, something came up, and I was not contacted by anyone to a future date to come to any meeting. So you can't accuse any of us because we do have things in our life that sometimes come up that we cannot meet all our obligations. And to say that we're not interested is a misstatement on their part.
I don't know if I can answer your question about how the committee was put together. That would be more of a question for Mr. Bratton. I don't even know if Mrs. Pro has any input on that.
I can jump in.
I mean, I know how the process started, the actual committee and the stipend, I don't know that I can address.
So last year, since I was the one, the president last year, we did have that on an agenda. We did have a discussion on that, and I believe the board did approve that DEI Committee with its structure that was put forth. I, I don't recall, Mrs. Beddio, whether we had a specific vote. I know it was discussed at the, at a meeting in which Ms. Collier was identified as the chair, and Mr. Feldman and Ms. Cosmats were, were named as the co-chairs of that committee. I think Mr. Bratton probably would be the right person to answer the questions about the stipend.
Well, I wish someone would come and meet with the board as a whole so we can ask questions of how they're going to implement this, when they're going to implement it, how the teachers are going to implement it. And I really feel that this is not a job. Our teachers are here to educate our children. They are not here to get into the political arena such as this DEI Committee. This is my feeling. I'm, I'm not a racist person, but I believe that the teachers have more important things to do than to sit down with kids from probably kindergarten or even at sixth grade level and tell them about what they should do and how they should behave. Their job is to educate the children in this district of any color, any race, any nationality, anything. And that's what we should, as a board, go ahead and make sure that they do.
Is there a particular area of the committee that you would like to have come, address you first, or address us first?
I think they should all come so we can address all of them.
All of the different subcommittee chairs?
Sure, why not?
Okay.
Any other discussion on this topic?
I would like to add, my understanding, and I can clarify after the meeting with Mr. Bratton, is the DEI Committee is not a board committee, so therefore it wouldn't have been approved by the Board of Education. I did, I was looking back in the previous agendas. It appears on Monday, June 22 of 2020, was our first statement that was drafted and was followed, it was immediately occurring prior around that time that they had that listening session. So as a district, we do have other committees within the, within the district that are not approved directly by the Board of Education's superintendent committees.
Well, this type of curriculum that they're, have on their agenda is not even approved as a curriculum item from the Ohio Board of Education. So why are we implementing it in the school districts so that our teachers have to teach the children about diversity and inclusion and that sort of thing? I wish somebody would explain that to me.
I believe Mrs. Collier did, as the curriculum supervisor. She said, "We're following all the Ohio Department of Education curriculum guidelines." There is no new curriculum being instituted at this point.
Well, I'd like her to show me where this type of curriculum is in the ODE.
I think her point was that we haven't changed the curriculum so much as added inclusive materials to the curriculum.
Correct. Yeah, we've invested some, some resources into purchasing materials where, in the illustrations, for example, we have students that represent all of the nationalities and ethnicities, you know, within our district. We had, we went searching even prior to this for, for materials where we had books that represented all of our students, and we, we struggled to find them. So those are some of the, the main things that we've purchased so far. But as far as any large-scale changes to the curriculum, none of that has occurred yet.
A real good place to start, if it's ready before our next work session, will be the, the video that the Community Committee is putting together. I think it will give you a good, broad overview of who's involved and what issues and what areas of expertise they bring to the table. Having worked with that group for a year, I've really enjoyed that because, like I said, it's pastors and other community leaders and city councils and mayors and police chiefs, fire chiefs. It's, it's just an interesting cross-section. And then listening to each person today sort of give their own summation of where they started and where they are now was really interesting today, and I think can give a, a real good base and starting point for us.
Any other discussion? Okay, the next item on our agenda is executive session. We have three purposes for our executive session this evening. We have We have one for the purpose of considering the employment of a public employee, one for the purpose of compensation of public employees, and one to consider the investigation of a complaint against a public, excuse me, a public employee or official. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bettio.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.